It's twenty-second of January, Tuesday evening, it's seven-thirty P M. This is the planning board meeting for public hearing for proposed zoning bylaws, amendments, and zone changes. I'll read the public notice. Office of the Planning Board. The Planning Board of the Town of Hatfield will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, January twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, at seven-thirty P M. in Memorial Town Hall, fifty-nine Main Street, Hatfield, Massachusetts, to consider amending the Hatfield zoning bylaw and official zoning map. Section two point two as follows. Number one, seven-thirty P M., map two-eleven parcel thirty, one-twenty-three North Hatfield Road, owned by Gregory J. Omasta and Darlene M. Omasta. The proposal is to change the frontage of this property from rural residential zoning to light industrial zoning. The second item on the agenda at seven-forty-five P M. is to amend the zoning bylaws by the addition of section ten point eight green development performance standards. The third item at eight o'clock, or scheduled at eight o'clock, is to amend the zoning bylaws by replacing the existing section six point six mixed-use development with an amended section six point six mixed-use development, and by the addition of a mixed-use development overlay district map. And the way we'll conduct the hearing, we have the first item on the agenda is the North Hatfield Road zone change. The frontage is highlighted, the back part of the parcel is zoned light industrial, the front is zoned rural residential, and the owner of the property would like to make the front zoning consistent with the rear zoning. We will entertain questions from the floor regarding this proposal. Anybody have any questions? It's pretty straightforward. Now, being on, anybody on the board? Oh, we don't even, where's our fourth member?
Greg.
Okay, well, we'll conduct the hearing. Anybody on the board have any questions? Again, it's pretty straightforward, it's just to make the frontage consistent with the rear. Therefore, being no further discussion, I make a motion that we recommend this proposed zone change be included in the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will put this proposal forward to the town meeting.
Thank you.
All there is to it, there was nobody here with any questions. I guess we could look over our minutes from the last meeting. Most into approve as submitted. Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Or any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes accepted unanimously of nineteen December. We've still got ten minutes to go. Our meetings are always so exciting because we have to follow a timeline here. So it's now seven-forty-five, and the second item on our agenda is to amend the zoning bylaws by the addition of section ten point eight green development performance standards. And the objective of the green development performance standards and the purpose of these standards is to promote high quality and greener developments that also preserve and enhance natural resources and the environment. Green development techniques also protect the quantity and quality of drinking water. And the question is why are green development performance standards needed? And the answer is unregulated new development can have severe impacts on the landscape and environment, including the destruction of trees, wildlife habitat, landscape features, open space, and scenic views, and the generation of water pollution, heat and light pollution, traffic and excess waste, and the use of excessive energy and water resources. Green development performance standards can address all of these issues and promote greener, better quality development with less environmental and energy impacts. And these standards were developed with the help of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission through a grant. Does anybody have any questions or concerns with the proposed green development performance standards that they'd like to discuss? Mr. Boyle.
You can set, but there's one right there. You can set, there's one right there. Okay. Yes, I do. Jeff Boyle, seventy-eight Main Street. With respect to this proposed bylaw, two real comments. One, there needs to be some provision that reflects your ability to modify and waive provisions of this. You're elected, you're from the town, you know the community, you're judged to be able to make decisions in the best interest of the community, you ought to have that kind of flexibility and ought to be in here, either in some general statement up front or embedded throughout in appropriate sections. And I say that for a couple of reasons. One, when you get into, for example, ten point eight-seven-three, where it talks about deterring vandalism by erecting four-foot fences, if you do build something around an agricultural area, I mean, what vandal is going to be deterred by a four-foot fence? Clearly, that should be the planning board's judgment as to how to handle such a thing. Another one talks about the sighting of buildings. I think, again, clearly very specific about angles, sun angles, that type of thing, and clearly in the purview of the planning board. And the other has to do with paragraph ten point eight-seven-three, protection and buffering of land in agricultural use. One specific comment there says, avoid development of agricultural land. There are very limited areas for development in the town of Hatfield, and while I recognize there's a strong concern about protection, both in space and agricultural land, there has to be some balance. The draft of the new section of the master plan reflects or indicates that, but needs to be some consideration for the economic needs of the community, and it's developed in very, very limited areas other than agricultural land to have any kind of development. So those are the two concerns I had. One, assuring that the planning board has some discretion in interpreting and implementing this bylaw. And second, with respect to development, it has to recognize, I think there should be a recognition, there's very limited land for development other than what might have been or is now in agricultural use. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to offer? Mr. Lesko.
Yeah, Ted Lesko, one to one Main Street. My concern here, especially on ten point eight-four and also on ten point two, when we're looking at single-family dwellers, okay, and we're talking about a person that's building a house and they have to create a green site, yeah, and I guess I'm looking for a clarification. That means everyone is building a brand-new house. They have to go through the hearing process before they build the house, so you guys can determine the following questions, okay? So that's a lot of added extra cost to the people that are building new houses or whatever, okay, in this town. You're looking at fees, you're looking at modifying the butters, all of that, and the question that I have is, is this all necessary on the dollar, you know, what it's going to cost the people here? It just inflates the prices of houses, permits, the fees, I mean, they're paying an astronomical amount right now, and so I'm just wondering if there's some way that we can incorporate this with the building fees, the building permit, or whatever, because this is going to affect every new house that's put up.
Yeah, well, the, I read through this kind of with a fine-tooth comb, and, you know, how was this going to apply to different situations? And the way I read it, the simple site plan review for a single-family or two-family home is handled at a regular planning board meeting, so the applicant wouldn't have to notify a butters. I agree that some of this is going to add cost to the planning process, for the applicant to develop his site plan. Although at the end, what is it, ten point eight-four, there's a little letter B, the planning board may waive any information requirements it judges to be unnecessary to the review of a particular plan. So I think what that says is, of course, the applicant would have to come to us and say, here's my proposal, what do I need to see? And this is done all the time with other, I do it before other planning boards, you go see them, see what they want to see from you.
But there's a lot, there's a lot to it, to build a house when it comes to the green part here.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of paperwork, there's plans, there are dollar figures involved, and getting a consultant or getting an engineer to lay out the house, I mean, you do have a plot plan now, the way this is, you've got to show every little hill, every deficiency of your land, you know, the whole nine yards, and you're putting an awful burden on new homeowners.
Well, I think paragraph fifteen there indicate the total site area to be disturbed, including material storage and the total quantity of cuts and fills, and then there's sub A, B, C, D, I think that should be eliminated. That's going to add a lot of cost to the homeowner who wants to build a house, so.
I mean, we're looking for something.
Well, I don't know how we, how, do you have any suggestions, Mr. Curtis from Pioneer Valley Planning, how we could temper this in?
Well, I could, just a couple of clarifications to add to the thought that said, for single-family and two-family homes, there is no public care required, so it's just simply submission to the planning board prior to getting a building permit. Planning board makes the decision, there's not a yes or no decision, it's just have the plans prepared adequately, so no one would get their plans rejected. Secondly, for single-family homes, again, you don't need a professional engineer or architect to prepare your plans. That provision only applies to the commercial and industrial types of projects, and the full-scale site plan approval process only applies to commercial and industrial projects, so it's really intended to be a very skilled, productive process for single-family homes, so someone could submit a fairly simple plan to the planning board and get it approved relatively quickly.
Okay, and in regards to ten point four, okay, under that, section three, okay, all plans for similar site plan review shall include a single sheet load plan and a skilled one inch to one hundred showing location, owner's name, all adjacent properties, all properties within, I mean, the average person that's putting in a home is not going to be able to do this, okay? It's easy for you, it's easy for me, for the builder, but the individual that's building a house, this is going to add a lot of cost to that. And here, we want people to come in and we want people to build in our town, and it's going to be cost prohibitive if we're not careful.
Here's a quick question, Lydia-Fish, four forty-nine Main Street, about the four-foot fence if you're near agricultural land. There's a lot of agricultural land, and there's still a lot of places to build, so you need to tell me if I get a lot from my in-laws for a dollar and I can build on their agricultural land, I have to put a four-foot fence around my house?
I would recommend we take that out.
Thank you. Part of the charm is to be able to look at the beautiful thing, agricultural land.
Walk over there and pick fresh vegetables.
Well, I think when it comes to asking the people at town meeting to accept this, there's going to be a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, and it might just fail just because of certain situations in here.
Is the intent of this more toward commercial development as opposed to residential development?
Well, the commercial is more, yeah, is more, yeah, there's more requirements, and a professional engineer needs to do it, and you have to take a look at other things as well, so, yeah, it's a little more involved for a commercial.
Well, what I'm saying, is there, you really feel there's a need to even have this for the residential part?
Well, that's what we're here to talk about. That's how the process works, whether it's here or Boston or Washington, we put forward a proposal and we take input on it, and there aren't many people here, so I don't think we have a representative cross-section here tonight. Mr. Spalasty.
Brad Spalasty from North Street. What is the object of this?
Well, it's the.
Could he answer that? Is he the fellow that wrote this?
Yeah, through.
Is the object of this study or report?
Why ask you?
If you picked up one of these fact sheets that.
Just asking, I'd like you to tell me.
Yeah, it just, it sort of explains that, the idea is that it is focused most heavily on commercial and industrial larger-scale projects.
They ask me why?
Why, why on those types of.
Then why, why are you doing this study at all?
Why, well, it's not a study, it's a bylaw. We were asked by the planning board to assist them in these two bylaws that are being presented tonight. Our role is to provide technical assistance to all the planning boards.
So you were asked by the planning board?
Yes. So, again, it's focused most heavily on larger projects that could potentially have large-scale impacts on the landscape and the environment, and, for example, sometimes what you'll see with a large commercial project is developer will come in and completely clear the site, remove all trees and vegetation, completely create it flat, and eliminate any topography, and really kind of lose the character of what was in the store. And sometimes those same sites get largely paved over, and then the stormwater from those sites, when it rains, runs off on everybody else's property, so you have a pretty significant impact without having some kind of changes. So the idea is to try to address some of those kinds of issues and concerns, and to, you know, to not make it onerous, excessively onerous in terms of single-family homes and duplexes. I would say that, you know, to the planning board, if you decide you want to modify this, the rule of thumb in terms of public hearing and the next step to town meeting is that you can make the bylaw less restrictive and still take it to town meeting without holding another public hearing. As long as you're not making the bylaw more restrictive, you can make those kinds of changes, so, you know, hearing some of the comments, we need people to work with that.
Thank you.
Okay, but we would have, we would have to, if it was a rewrite, you know, it's not just a matter of crossing a sentence out here or there, that would take another, it would take some time to get that done. I'm not sure how we want to modify this, if we just want to cross off some paragraphs, cross out some words, cross out some sentences in order to lighten it up a little bit. Yes, Lydia?
Just a suggestion, I mean, I think generally this is a great idea, I like the idea of the greener and.
Trees and grass.
Trees and grass.
Yeah, that's what it's for.
Just trying not to totally devastate, you know, development or whatever, but what about going forward with the sections of it that have to do with development, which is your main concern, and possibly revisiting next year the residential section? I mean, how many houses are going to get built in?
That's a possibility as well.
It might be just a little easier to edit that than try to reinvest the residential part and already.
Well.
If I may ask, Bob, what was it that the planning board asked Pioneer Valley to do for us?
Well, again, to develop some green development standards along with the other proposal we have here.
I mean, in the realm of what Lydia was saying, as far as, you know, protecting some of that green space there, the trees and the grass and such?
Yeah, so that the existing old growth trees remain to the extent possible, and that the site just doesn't get stripped and leveled, and then they go around and plant little two-inch trees that take thirty-five years to grow.
Has, Mr. Curtis, has any surrounding communities have a green bylaw, green development performance standards that they've incorporated and have passed in regards to this, you know, the single-family, the section that we're talking about, has somebody adopted this or adopted a green bylaw?
So there's several communities that are on the same track with Hatfield that are currently consistent, and ones that I can think of off the top of my head are East Hampton and Palmer, and they are in the process, like you are.
Doing the same thing.
Working through the bylaw. It's a relatively recent concept, so those are the ones that are working on it.
So in regards to the single-family development standards, the points that Mr. Lesko brought up regards to, you know, the added cost, potential added cost to a, you know, a home builder, any feedback on that, or has anybody addressed that, that yes, it's good, no, it's not good, or any information that you could share with us regarding, yeah, it's a good idea, or no, we're going to exit out of it?
Well, I mean, there isn't, there's not any experience with that specific provision yet to be able to say how much, you know, how much it costs. I think the idea, when we were working on this, was to try to make it something that a homeowner could provide without, again, hiring a consultant, so you, you know, could work off of existing information, use a topographic map, for example, as a tool for submitting the plan, and, you know, there may be specific components of those provisions that we could take a closer look at and see how we can reduce that even further for single-family homes.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
Just a comment, questions to ask my members of the board, if you'll be honest, the genesis of this was, in fact, commercial development?
Yes.
What prompted this development bylaw to issue commercial development, not residential?
Well, I don't know if we can, if we can take out just the residential part and still have it make sense. I know one other time we had a proposed zoning bylaw, we took out part of it, and the rest of it didn't make sense.
Well, I can, that's the planning board's wish, I can do that relatively easily, maybe an unusable bylaw for the commercial and industrial sector.
What do you think about that? Do you think we should take it, take it out and take a look at it later? There's still some other things that need to be changed further on in here when we get into the commercial that I think need to be added, a sentence taken out here, a word there, to, again, to temper it a little bit.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In ten point eight-six-one, all right, there's another issue here on A. Okay, it says, no clearing or site disturbance may occur on a parcel before a building permit is issued, except for norm-wide cultural activities and commercial logging accordance with the state forest, or so on. So that means if somebody buys a parcel and they want to build a house on it, they can't even bulldoze or clear the land, the way this reads, to see what they have underneath, the growth and undergrowth and whatever hills and stuff like that, like normally, if you're preparing a site to build on, you want to see what you've got and where the best location is. On the open fireland, that's, that's good, because you can see what you have, but on some of this, you can't see it, and if you're limiting them to clearing the land, that's not going to work.
Yeah, I see your point.
Can I just add?
Yes.
Just the thought behind that is that the opposite side of that argument, I hear your side of, is that sometimes a person will purchase a piece of land and bulldoze the entire thing before any permits are issued, before the town has any opportunity to say anything about it, and resources are lost, wildlife habitat is destroyed, sometimes wetlands get filled in, so that's the other side of the coin.
Yes, that's what I was thinking, too, that all of a sudden the site is cleared and without regard for the nice old trees or the topography or the whatever, the wetlands that are there, it's, the damage is done, and then the guy comes in for a building permit or for approval of his plan, and all of a sudden, it's a bare site, so.
Change one of them?
I think under that ten point eight-six, we also need to add, under that first paragraph, that the planning board may waive any information requirements or any requirements it judges to be unnecessary to the review of a particular plan, so that, that allows the planning board to waive any of these requirements that we feel that aren't necessary for the approval.
Now, if, Mr. Chair.
Also, it's paragraph H, it says, clearing for utility trenching shall be limited to the minimum area necessary to maneuver a backhoe or other construction equipment. I think we need to cross out backhoe or other and just say maneuver construction equipment. And then in paragraph K, it says, the last sentence says, in no case shall land be left unstabilized over the winter. Well, ideally, you don't do that, but sometimes it happens, the weather closes in before the regurgitation can occur, so maybe that needs to come out of there.
Another question I have, is there any guidelines in here when the board creates a variance or allows a variance? Is there guidelines that lay out in order to give a variance to this, or certain criteria has to be met? And otherwise, it's to the discretion, for me, it might be one way, for him, it might be another.
Well, I think, no, there isn't, and it's not a variance, it would be a.
Waiver or kind of.
Yeah, waiver, and we do that with site plan, and this, and site plan review says that, chapter forty says, says we can waive.
These things up, because as you know, at town meeting, you're going to get more questions than this.
You know, but you see, your site might be different than his site, so your site needs to have this particular item addressed, whereas his site doesn't need to have that particular item addressed, so it, I guess it has to be discretionary, and you have to rely on us, as Mr. Boyle said, that we have the voters of the town to answer to. If they don't like the way we're doing our job, then they get rid of us. And again, it depends on the circumstance, it depends on the site, it depends on what's going to happen there, what the use is, the structure, you know, the amount of paving and all that sort of thing. the use is, the structure, you know, the amount of paving and all that sort of thing. So I think it, it has to be discretionary. And there are normally five of us here, so all five of us would have to, or a majority of us would have to agree on it. It couldn't be one, one person's decision to waive certain requirements.
Just don't want to get into a situation for the town that we get into lawsuits because you allowed it for Joe over here and Rich over there, you didn't allow it, and you gave him a waiver, and you didn't give this other one, and then it becomes a legal issue and causes us a lot of problems. So, and I'm just waiting to fly, 'cause I see a lot of problems.
And I guess that could happen with anything, with any of the decisions we make, especially special permits, the appeal process is filed at the courthouse. So, doesn't always end up in a lawsuit. Generally, the attorneys work it out outside of the courthouse, so. But most any of our decisions could end up down there on Gothic Street.
The other thing I was gonna mention, if there's not another public hearing, and if it just goes directly to town meeting, town meeting will take two days, maybe just on this, okay? Or what will happen is somebody will table it and you go back to the drawing board. So you wanna make sure you have everything, you know, over, and I wish more...
Well, we're trying that, and, and, again, I don't know if we can always, you can't please all the people all the time, either.
I just wish more people were here tonight to voice their opinion and give some idea of what's out there.
I know, that's what I said. We don't, we don't have the cross-section of folks here. I don't know if it's the weather or what the deal is.
The tough part about this is it doesn't affect them now, but boy, their kids, it's gonna affect them when they go to build in town, Hatfield.
I understand. And we don't wanna discourage...
Right.
Whether it's single-family homes or because everybody needs somewhere to live, or duplexes because everybody needs somewhere to live, and we don't wanna discourage commercial and industrial development. I think we've been pretty friendly to those folks because we need to, we need to balance our tax base as well.
Absolutely. I'd like to, you know, I'm very cautious on this kind of stuff because with the stretch code, we created a lot of problems with the stretch code when we loaded the stretch code. A lot of added costs to building a house just because of the stretch code, and if we had another document like this, another bylaw, it could even make it a lot worse.
Personally, I think the stretch code, while it costs people money upfront, they're gonna save it every month with their heating bills, so there's a payback with that. I guess the payback with this thing is we get greener development, there's more trees preserved, and that sort of thing is taken into account.
Well...
I just wanted to make it clear, I'm not saying this is a bad thing. I'm just saying that there's a lot of things in here that can happen that can be negative.
Right, and that's the purpose of this public hearing, is to get the input from folks, so that we're headed in the right direction and that it's something that can pass at town meeting that everybody wants. Yes, Lydia?
So if I'm understanding correctly, your problems are mostly with the residential development.
Yeah.
So again, he said, not that difficult to rewrite it, to take out the residential part, leave the commercial part.
On the commercial, you're probably gonna add a lot of expense, because, I mean, they do, they do get more into DTL.
Are you gonna run into a problem with town hall? I have the sense that people are more concerned about the impact of commercial development, so I think you're gonna have an easier time passing something that's, you know, burden on the commercial developer.
And generally, the commercial development, they do a site plan anyway. They, they just do because they need to get it built, and they don't build it out of an idea. And that's something that they submit to us. This just gives us some, some more standards to look at, at that site plan. So they, they have an engineer, a site engineer hired anyway to do that, and, you know, maybe he's gotta spend a few more hours on it because he's gotta...
It's gonna be added costs, but the other thing that you gotta remember, they can write, the business can write it off, the homeowner can't write it off.
They still have to pay for it, though.
And they can choose whether or not to do business here. I mean, if it's too stringent of...
That's true.
If it's too stringent of standard that they throw, you throw out there, they can just say, I'm going somewhere else.
That's true. We don't want that either. We don't want it so tough that they just drive right on through and go to the next town up, or don't come here at all. That's why we have to be able to temper it with the, with the waivers. I think that will temper it. I think we also need to add that into ten point eight seven, that the planning board may waive any requirements that judges to be unnecessary to the review of a particular plan. We need to add that in several places.
Just like to make one more comment, Bob. Only, planning board review and waiver, that's great for the planning board today, but if, when, if, when the planning board changes and we're all gone from here, it's no different than the other board, then you wanna look at that so it doesn't create a problem that somebody can use it against the people. So, you know, we're, we're in this for a long period of time, but when we're not here, you know, it can happen.
But I bet the guys who were on the planning board fifty years ago said, those new guys, they're not gonna do it the rest. Those guys don't know what they're talking about, you know? If the people don't think that we can do the job, they, I guess they shouldn't check that box on the ballot. Well, a couple other things. Ten point eight seven three, that is the commercial, industrial, and civic projects portion of the bylaw. And that's where it says, "Applicants shall, to the extent feasible, avoid development of land in agricultural use." And then it goes on to say, "Or indirect impacts thereto as a result of any proposed development on adjacent parcels." I think that "or indirect impacts thereto as a result of any proposed development on an adjacent parcel" should be stricken. And we can look at that as part of our review, but I, I just think it's just kind of, it adds too much to it. I don't know how you guys feel about it. And then, paragraph three, under that ten point eight seven three, it says, "Where land in agricultural use will not be preserved, explain why preservation was not possible within the site design and indicate strategies for mitigating the impacts of this loss of land in agriculture use." I think that paragraph needs... Pardon me?
Could you, could you compare the section that you just read? Could you explain that?
I'm not exactly sure what it means. I read it, and it seems to me that the applicant, if he's not preserving agricultural land, would have to tell us why he's not preserving it. And then would have to have some sort of strategies for mitigating the impacts of this loss. And I don't know what that means. If that means to go up on the mountain and clear some land and make up those five acres. Could you define it for me, for us?
Maybe an example would help. Where there's a project proposed on, where there's a mix of prime agricultural land and maybe some soils that are less important, there might be a choice of where on the site you can develop and what might be not developed as part of the project. And it would be possible, in some cases, to cluster the buildings and to keep some of the site perhaps in agricultural land. So there might be a way to develop the site creatively to protect some farmland, even other developments still going forward. On Route nine in Hatfield, there's been a number of cases where, because there's a state highway permit involved, development has been, in fact, actually required to mitigate the loss of farmland by preserving some ag land elsewhere in Hatfield. I'm not suggesting that you do that here in Hatfield, but that's, that's just an example of mitigation that happens, and it happens pretty commonly along Route nine, because it's all farmland, and they're trying to find some way to protect some farmland. As they lose, some components are going forward. So there's sometimes a payment into a fee. Hatfield has a farmland preservation fund that they use to buy ag land away from Route nine, and the money comes from the development along Route nine that occurs. So I don't know if that helps, but those are a couple of examples.
Well, I mean, to me, I would say, I mean, it can't, it can't just be left by itself like that. It would, you would have to, there'd have to be something that says mitigating in what way. I mean, like you were saying, I mean, either, I mean, when I read that, I read exactly as you were saying, okay, they're gonna do this, you're gonna go buy five acres over here and do something nice for, you know, for the town. That's, that's what it says to me. And...
Can't somebody do that?
You know, right.
Yeah, or establish a fund. I think what Chris Curtis said, is a fund established where the town... Because under sixty-one A, the town has the right of first refusal. If a farmer wants to take it out or sell the land, the town can buy that farmland. And I guess that fund that the developer contributes to would generate the monies to do that. I think that gets awful complicated. That requires a whole nother bylaw, I guess, to do that. Yes, Lydia?
So the way, the way I read that, and the sample that pops into my head, is you've got a development that's taking up some agricultural land, and they site their building or buildings onto that agricultural land as opposed to some other land, because possibly those lands are wetlands, and they develop them closer to the wetlands, the worst-case scenario, than onto the agricultural. So they're developing more onto the agricultural, and then they just come to you and say, hey, it was the worst case to develop to the left as opposed to developing to the right. This was the best-case scenario. Yes, we impacted agricultural lands, but we've only gone as far as we had to, to save the work for the other part, to protect the wetland areas. For example, I mean, that's just the example that pops into my head. And all they're doing is coming to you and saying, our mitigation is that we haven't gone a hundred feet to the right, we've only gone fifty feet to the right, 'cause that's the minimum we had to go.
When you set this up and asked for this survey or standards, what did, what were you looking for? Were you, are you looking for everything that's in here, or was your concern about commercial?
Well, it was, it was mostly, it was commercial.
More commercial than residential.
Why would we be involved in talking about agricultural land when it's zoned as agricultural? And if I come to you and I wanna get a zone change from agricultural to whatever, I have to go to you without your permission to get this over?
Not all agricultural use land is zoned agricultural. There's some industrial land that's farmed.
Are they residential?
There's some industrial zoned land that's farmed. There's...
But it's still industrial land?
Yes, I know, but it's farmland as well.
Or it's zoned industrial, right?
Right. Or it could be rural residential or outland residential, or it could be business, or even down here, there's town center, town center business, and the land is agricultural use. I, I guess I'm, I don't know, the few people we have here seem as though they don't want the bylaw, or it's, it's not ready, or it needs to be modified to pull out the residential stuff, and... Well...
You just wanna make sure what you pulled out.
I know, that's...
It's not gonna affect the whole thing, because then you're about to split one.
Yeah, or it's, it's ineffective.
Yeah.
And, and again, that happened once about twenty years ago, where a portion of the bylaw was taken out, and then the whole rest, the whole rest of that section was ineffective. It didn't make any sense because part of it was missing, you know? Like a tire without a wheel, or a wheel without a tire. We couldn't use it.
Would it be wise to maybe just hold off on this until other towns come up and see where they commence, since there's only two towns, or the towns that have gone through this? And who knows if they have any questions?
Maybe that's the way to do it, table this for now, and maybe have some more...
Public hearings.
Public meetings where we get input, where everybody, where we get a group of citizens here, and we all sit down at the table and put our heads together.
Come up with a something that works for everyone.
Yeah, rather than, rather than a debate on the town meeting floor, and then it gets all goofed up there, and it has no meat.
We have to make, it's a gift for you to do that. It also takes a lot of pressure off the zone, the planning board, because you have all this input and getting...
Yeah, we'd have to meet weekly now, because, because, you know, there's, there aren't a lot of houses being built, but if we get another housing boom, we'd have to be here weekly to, to approve all those little plans, you know? As it is, we don't get everything done, meeting twice a month. So, how do you, Jem, feel? Do you think maybe we should just table this?
Yeah. Because I think the other thing that'll happen is if it goes to town floor, you're gonna have a lot of people that are gonna say, I never heard about this. And that happens many, many times. And our answer is, well, we publish it here, we publish it in the town paper, I don't know if we publish it on the... I mean, I don't know how people get their information now. I guess that's a whole nother question as, as to these public meetings. So a lot of people do not get the Daily Hampshire Gazette. They do not get it. They read the highlights on the, on the internet, on the web, but they don't go into the back section. I don't even know if on the, on the Gazette, if there is a section that lists all the public meetings in Hampshire County. So that's one of our dilemmas, not only for this board, but for a number of other, other boards.
The good, good thing is that, John, you're videotaping it, but what we say, I don't know if the whole public understands what we're saying.
Right, because you have to have the document in your hand, you have to have it read.
You gotta follow along the dialogue, you gotta, you gotta know exactly what's going on. Otherwise, they're not gonna get it.
Yeah, I've read every, everything it does now. I just drove.
It's like a mystery novel. It's like a mystery novel. What did that say?
Yeah.
Well, then I would make a motion that we table the Green Development Performance Standards proposed bylaw and do further, hold further public meetings on it in the future to work out some of these details and address some of the concerns of the folks that are here. That's a motion.
Seconded.
Further discussion. Are those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, so we're tabling this till such time, until, it may be next annual town meeting, before we get it done. We'll hold some hearings and invite folks to come in.
With this little session tonight, at least the townspeople get a drift of what's out there, and then they can get the documentation, because it's all available there in the town hall. They can get it, talk, you know, see it, look at the video.
Well, we will, we will try and let the folks know that we're working on this and to please come. I know years ago, you used to be able to call the Gazette reporter and give them, they put a little news block in there that the planning board is... put a little news block in there that the planning board is working on this proposal and they're gonna have a meeting such and such a date at such and such a time, the public is invited, but they don't print that anymore. They're trying to save ink and paper, I guess, so you can't even get them to do that.
Well, you get their attention when it costs the money and that's something that you have to do. I mean, right now, homeowner is not affected because you have your home.
Right.
But their children are affected, so they might like to be helping their children out and they wouldn't want to pay for the extra.
Well, we welcome the, we welcome the public to come to our meetings and, like we are here tonight, give us some input.
Right.
And, and then we all work together to develop the bylaw. Yes, Eddie?
Would there be any, could they send these out or mail these to the county?
We don't have the money for that, Eddie. We don't have the money for that. That's, you know, when this meeting was advertised, if you, if you wanted a copy, you could get a copy from the town clerk. When we start working on it again, we can make copies, we'll try and get a notice in the paper so that folks will come to discuss it. Now that we've, we've been on the, on the Hatfield Communications Channel here, folks will know that we're gonna work on this this spring. Come on down.
We can try and link this to the town website too so they can watch this.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's another thing to put a, put a notice on the website that we're working on this and we welcome input from the citizens. So we'll do that, okay? Next item on the agenda, at eight o'clock, is the mixed use, proposed revisions to the Hatfield Mixed Use Development Bylaw. And we already have a mixed use development bylaw, section six point six of the current zoning bylaws, and this, this expands upon it a little bit. And the result of, this came about as a result of the proposal to rezone West Street from border to border, rezoned business and light industrial and that sort of thing. And in order to, again, temper that so that we didn't end up with a Route 9 in Hadley, we, we thought we should do some mixed use development so that the, the business owner could live upstairs or live in the back of his business and the way it used to be in the old days, where the general store, the proprietor lived upstairs or lived in the back. So we get a mix of things so we don't end up with a, with a commercial strip. Because the Route 5 was not zoned border, rezoned border to border, we developed a mixed use overlay district map which creates four mixed use districts in town and basically they're business zone now. It's in North Hatfield at the intersection of West Street, Depot Road, Mountain Drive, at the south end of town, at the North Hampton border where the Lindsay Road Bridge, Bridge Lane comes in where the Sisters Convenience Store is, there's what used to be McGrath's Restaurant and the Double D's Diner Restaurant there. That would be the other mixed use area. And then we've got some downtown...
Hatfield Center.
Yeah, the Hatfield Center would be mixed use areas as well. So we'll open the floor to discussion on the proposed mixed use development. Mr. Boyle?
Jeff Boyle said anything, a couple comments. One, I thought the document was very generally well, well-written. I'd get off of the same comment that I made concerning the other bylaw and I think there needs to be some clear statement to the planning board's discretion to make changes and or waive certain provisions in judgment that feels appropriate. But my real comment is, while it's an excellent document, we've only got a handful of areas available or to which it would be applied. And, and some of these are virtually built out as they stand.
Well, yes, but I think there's still room for, very little. You know, the, I, I know like Sisters Convenience Store there, there used to be apartments upstairs and there was a business in there. I think copper ran his, was it cow breeding or something? Something to do with Holstein, free shing cows ran a business out of there. So that, and there was a residential apartment upstairs, so that's kind of a mixed use. Going down the street, there's the, the old motel there that, that's a little worse for the wear, so that's a parcel that could be developed, whether it in its present state or somebody knocks it down and starts over or even puts a, a cluster of mixed use things in there. Then moving farther south...
I'm not objecting to...
No, I know that, but I...
They are, are, but you're making my point. I'm not objecting to the ones that are designated, but I think the areas need to be expanded.
Well, I think because the, we run out of the business zone that...
Well, as, as your draft master plan change in terms of land use talks about, rezoning is something that needs to be looked at.
Well, we do. We need to, we need to rezone, moving up Route 5 rather than a, a big broad brush creeping north or creeping south. And then the way I see it, the, the, the mixed use would, would move along with that. This, this map would expand along with the expansion of zoning, of business zoning or light industrial zoning, which would allow for some mixed use.
David, I think it's an excellent, excellent case. Very limited areas which would be applied.
Yeah, but there's still room for, for mixed use to, to, to happen, whether it's in the old existing buildings or those buildings are taken down and even, even up in North Hatfield, then you've got that big strip of Malinowski's land there that's wide open for some sort of residential business cluster in there as well.
Will this take into effect home occupation? Does it affect home occupation at all?
Well, there's some definitions in here.
I didn't, I wasn't looking for that.
Well, it's, it's on the third page under six point six four. If you get over into professional services, I mean, some of them, shoe repair, photographic services, those are kind of, those could be a mom and pop kind of thing, home occupation. Beauty shops, that's pretty common, barber shop, that's, I mean, we've got one of those here in town now, so...
That means that they can live in their backyard also.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And from part they can do that in residential district.
Funeral homes, generally those are, the proprietor lives there. Steam baths, I don't know about that.
How did that get in there?
Then you get into medical and health offices. I know there are, some chiropractors work out of their house and...
Dentists.
Yeah, dentists, engineering and architectural, those, those guys work out of their house. Bookkeepers and CPAs and that sort of thing work out of home too, so...
But they don't have to be residential, or they don't have to be zoned business because they can do it in a residential area.
Well, yeah, we allow for that, some of that in our regular bylaws as well, and some of it require special permit, but this, this allows it in that, in the designated areas.
Just one, one comment, home occupations is specifically listed as a permitted use in bottom of page three, that's the third line of the bottom of page...
Yeah, home, home occupation. Well, some of these are, are not necessarily, I mean, a funeral home wouldn't be a home occupation, but barber shop might be and maybe a photographer might, so, yeah, so it's further defined down here and I guess that, that's subject to the planning board's interpretation.
Somebody giving music lessons, piano lessons.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's another home occupation kind of thing. And it defines live work units. A live work unit is defined as a single unit that is a studio loft or one bedroom consisting of both a commercial slash office and a residential component that is occupied by the same resident. The live work unit shall be the primary dwelling of the occupant, is what it further defines Anybody else have anything to offer? Nothing? Lydia? We're good to go? Eddie?
No.
Okay, because it's kind of out here in the neck of the woods, but it's south...
I may have some at town meeting, but right now I am...
Okay, okay. Any discussion amongst the board here? I've been doing all the talking, but...
You're not making any zoning changes?
No, no, we're not changing the zoning. It's, it's, again, those areas are primarily business zone, there's some light industrial there, and it just allows the mixed use for the, the guy can live in his business. It wouldn't be like Danko wouldn't be a mixed use, but that could be...
They could add a second...
Yeah, or something like that. And, and again, Sisters is a good example where there were, I think there were two apartments upstairs. One was being used for business and the other was residential. So, you know, and that kind of stuff, while it wasn't, the proprietor didn't live there, but this addresses that, that it should be the proprietor living there. Yes, Mr. Curtis?
I think there's one key point about, about this bylaw is that it doesn't add any new restrictions, that probably it kind of simply provides new opportunities for economic development in town. So I think it makes it much easier to sell.
And again, the purpose of it was to temper that business zone that was proposed so that we didn't end up with a bunch of gas stations and Cumberland Farm Stores and things like that, that it would allow for business use and with the proprietor living there as well. Anything from the board?
I think it's, I've covered a lot of things that we, we talked about in that meeting.
Well, you mentioned something about a gas station, it just popped in my head, okay? Because if you did put residential above a gas station, it could be a very dangerous sort of happening.
I think the building code addresses that. It doesn't call it out here specifically, but I think the building...
It did call it out here, that it wasn't, yeah, I saw it somewhere.
Well, I think the building code addresses that. It would certainly have to meet some strict fire standards and means of egress and prohibited uses.
Page four B.
Yeah, prohibited uses. The following issues shall not be included in the mixed use development. Industrial uses, B, motor vehicle sales, maintenance and repair, C, gasoline filling stations, so we addressed it here. Sometimes we have to look for stuff in here if we don't. Also says adult entertainment is not allowed. Dry cleaning, animal hospitals, bars and cocktail lounges, drive up services, junkyards. So it's, it's the stuff that you don't want out there that either is not the prettiest place or not the best place to have, stuff we don't want on our main, main road or in our downtown area. Anything else, folks?
Thank you.
Well, then I make a motion that we recommend that the proposed revisions to the Hatfield Mixed Use Development Bylaw be, be included in the town meeting warrant as proposed.
You don't want to take Mr. Boyle's recommendation of having that one addition of allowing the planning board?
I'm gonna have a statement.
I guess, where do we put that?
Pardon me? I think you do what the lawyers do when you write up, when you write legislation, notwithstanding any provision of law.
Notwithstanding any of the law.
Here to four. I guess where, where would we put that? Where would we put that?
Under, probably, under Establishment Administration, six point six three.
Yeah, that's what I'd say too.
I would think that shall be...
Okay, do we, do we make a line D and say, what does the zoning bylaw say? Thank you for bringing that up. I forgot about that. You see, under site plan review or special permit in our bylaws, it says that the planning board may waive any information requirements adjudicated to be unnecessary to the review of a particular plan. And it says such waiver decisions must be documented in writing by the planning board. Do we want to include that sentence under six point three, six point six three E? Yeah, line E. So we will include that whole sentence, two sentences. The planning board may waive any information requirements adjudicated to be unnecessary to the review of a particular plan. Such waiver decisions must be documented in writing by the planning board. And I make a motion that we, we recommend the amended to include paragraph six point six three E of the proposed revisions for the Hatfield Mixed Use Development Bylaw that they'd be recommended to be included in the annual town meeting warrant. Do you have that well, is that clear? Does it make sense? Got a motion?
Make a motion that...
I made the motion.
I mean, I second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That concludes our public hearing. Thank you for coming out on a cold night. And thank you for your input as well.
You're welcome.
We have other business? I don't know if you want to...
I just didn't want you to have too easy time.
Wow, here, Mr. Spellessi.
Yeah, Mr. Spellessi, we did the minutes. Mr. Spellessi is, is here to talk to us.
Well, I have a request to make from the...
It's on page thirty-three.
Page thirty-three.
Yeah, of the, of the zoning bylaws, it's five point three point three.
Special...
Capital letter B, under special permit. Thank you. Yeah, we, yeah, if you could. And I'll talk to Louise, the town clerk, to see how many more she thinks she needs.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
And I'm gonna leave you with the fact sheets and the bylaws.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. How many trees gave up their lives for them?
Back in two thousand and nine, we came to the planning board with the idea of developing what is known as Jericho Road. One parcel is owned by the Boyle family and the other parcel was owned by the Peles family. Since we've talked, the Peles property's been sold, but the Boyle property still is here.
Harlow, Harlow is put on...
Scott Harlow.
It's built by one or two...
He has one in there and he has, yeah, and he has, and he has it planned so that he can put in five or six and they have a plan if he needs to see it, okay?
Yeah. Everybody know where you are here?
This is Jericho Road coming down...
Jericho Road, Jericho Road, between the cemetery and Jericho Road. And here's the bar...
And here's the barn over here at the turn, that's where our property lies, goes down the water and there. Hey?
Ridge Street.
South side of Ridge Street.
Cemetery, the north side, red barn. Still there in that barn? I think they took.
Jack's auto.
I was at a master plan meeting, they kept talking like that. Jack, you know where Jack's auto is and you know where Tony Palamino is?
You gotta know the history of that.
Yeah, I know that, you're, okay? So that's, that just give you a little later, the next plan, we've got a plan, I'm going to turn it this way so everything will be the same way I did. This is Bridge Street?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other mic on there, mixed use of that.
Okay, this is Jericho Road coming in.
Yeah, okay.
This is what we proposed to put a development in here, okay?
This is the cog.
Fifty, at this point is fifty-five and older, putting it on record, okay? In order to do this developing in here, our, the Boyle property, there's a sixteen and a half foot road in here, Jericho Road is only sixteen and a half feet. You need a minimum that varies between thirty and fifty feet, okay? We tried to purchase this piece of property and we couldn't. Scott Harlow, when he purchased this, also purchased this little piece right here, and we made arrangements with him to purchase this. This is from the town, the selectmen requiring us to, who we have to do. The road is, and we agreed that we would put sewer and water in here going out to Bridge Street. We did all the work, there's enough depth here and we've done all this engineering to make sure we could go into the main sewer and water, okay? The road, when we were discussing this, discussing this in 2009, there was a question of who owned the road, okay?
It's a county road.
It was a county road, okay? This is where we couldn't purchase this, so we made an arrangement that we would bring the road in along here, sewer and water and paved into this project.
And bring that portion of Jericho Road up to today's standards as far as width and layout, okay?
Yes, okay.
And we went to the HCOG, who owns county roads.
Okay.
And they have. I have a letter right here.
Okay.
Here's the letter from the Hampshire Commonwealth Government, releasing road debt.
They had no problem with why.
Approved the application. How did the, how did the county end up owning this?
How serious a look in the back? That's an old county road.
I don't know. I guess there's other county roads around. It must be when the county was a stronger form of government and they owned some roads, I don't know.
There's another county road that ends up right behind Richie Valinger's house, in the sand bank.
You know where Richie Valinger is?
That's right, yeah, that's off of this part.
And here's the letter.
Somebody called me about that once.
Two thousand and nine, that the board of selectmen approved everything and the, as long as we pay, the developer pays for everything. If you need copies and stuff, certainly can. I don't know if it's important here, but I have all this state timeline, times from Hatfield, from Jericho Road to wherever, the center of town.
So this is a similar project to the, what's that called? Hatfield Village?
Hatfield Village.
On Elm Street.
Correct.
And these are what, these are going to be duplexes as well?
What are these?
Those are duplexes.
Okay.
Just like the ones that were designed at this, when we got this design, at the Hatfield Village.
So it's eleven or this?
Twelve, thirteen.
No, that's eleven, no, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
So there'd be twenty-two units.
Okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, there's two.
Yeah, Jerry Gates came to us.
Correct.
A long, long time ago with the concept.
These are the same plans.
This is similar, the economy tank.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We want to make a proposal and have it in the record, that we presented it to you and then come back with the final details.
The only areas, rural residential. Rural residential.
Should we have a letter from the building inspector?
Congregate housing for elderly and disabled is SPB, which is use allowed with a special permit from the planning board. So that's what's required, is a special permit. And that's how we handled Hatfield Village. And these are going to be owned the same way, those are condos and.
Individually owned. Each one is separately owned.
Okay, and how is the land going to be? Is it common ownership of land, an association owns the land?
Association owns the land, I would say.
That's our, yes, that's our.
Association owns the outside.
And the homeowner owns, it's a condo, he owns.
Correct.
The shell.
The shell of the building, yeah, okay. Again, we need, we would need to see, we need an application and we need to see.
I have the application.
Application for a special permit. There were, there are numbered, we need, the bylaw addresses how many copies of the plans, so we.
Many copies.
Yeah, we need site plans, we'd want to see the houses, how they're.
That is not.
How they look.
Just from my own knowledge right now, we'll make this presentation, is this on record that we've made this presentation to the planning board?
Well, it's in the minutes and it's on a videotape. There's no clock that starts ticking.
But it's not a public hearing.
No, it's not a, I mean, this is, this is a.
Like an informational.
Yeah, it's an informational meeting. It's what's required and what do you want to see from us kind of thing.
Why isn't it going to get into?
Yeah, it's really informational, it's to get you headed in the right direction. So there's no, there's no certification of anything.
You have an application, should we give you this now?
No, that's not the application. You need a s, application for special permit.
Okay.
And those are downstairs in the hall or Wilman has those as well.
And we have to publish it.
Yeah, that's submitted to the town clerk. The town clerk then start, the town clerk date stamps everything. That starts a timeline, it starts a clock ticking, and we have a certain period of time to take action on it and a certain period of time, a certain period of time to hear it, a certain period of time to take action on it, and, you know, it requires a four-fifths vote of the, of the board to approve it or deny it, so.
Any?
Well, I, you know, these projects, they're, it's housing, but there's no kids in the school, there's no, you know, the, hopefully the crime, you know, it doesn't cause a lot of emergency services to be there and you're going to take care of your own road from the, from the, from the portion of Jericho that you improve in, you're going to maintain that.
What's out there for septic or sewer?
No, they can tie into the sewer, there's sewer there.
Tying into the sewer system on Bridge Street, tying into the sewer system and the water system.
So I guess the question would be, would the.
Bring it right along here.
Would whoever runs the sewer plant, is there.
Well, yeah, they, they have to be notified as well, so of this proposal, so they can take a look at it and say, well, yeah, we got capacity or we don't have capacity.
I don't know if we have that done or not, but we do it again anyway.
Well, it's part of the application process that they, that they get notified and then if they don't have capacity in the sewer, then, or the water department doesn't have water capacity, they would notify the planning board that, and then we would have to deny it based on that.
I understand, that's not wrong.
So, but I, I got a feeling there's enough sewer out there.
This is what we're talking about, widen the road.
Right.
Yeah, and that would, that would give access to.
That road.
Yeah, emergency vehicles, because you have to look at.
And it was wide enough where they could turn around, everything was fine.
You have to be able to pass.
They had to make some modifications up here for a fire truck to.
We have that, it's all taken.
To get around.
Yep, yep.
The same thing, and that's what this T-bone is for, the turnaround. So, again, I think they're.
The outlets are here, this is a.
We also have a right of way or a left of way.
We have an emergency outlet here if necessary.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe you should put that on there, because I, the Hatfield Village has a second.
Egress.
Egress that's blocked and it's only for emergency use.
This is not the well, it's not full, it's probably the size of Jericho Road, that little entrance.
Yeah, but it's, it's only for emergency, it's in case.
Carol owns the.
Yeah. You always have to look at a double point of failure, that the ambulance is in there trying to get somebody out and the fire truck breaks down and blocks the road, so they can, therefore they can use that. It's just for that purpose, and so you, you wouldn't need to have it the same standard as Jericho Road, because you're not looking at vehicles passing one another.
I think we have a.
Not on a daily basis.
Which I don't think, put it over or not, we had, it was gravel, that emergency outlet at Hatfield Village.
Yeah, that's the construction road is what, it's so that.
You said for that, didn't you?
Yeah, that's so that mud doesn't get tracked down to the road, it's called a construction pad or something, so. Again, I think those are good projects for the town, because we get tax dollars and we don't have to spend a lot of money putting kids in school and providing services and that sort of thing, so.
Consistent with the plan, you just had to develop, draft a master plan, that talks about the need for housing for elderly.
And again, there's going to be.
And young families.
There's going to be a real need for it as well, yeah, and that frees up, you know, the folks that are getting to be, getting up in years and they don't want to have to mow their one acre of lawn, they can move out there and not have a big yard to take care of, and that, then the kids can move into the.
Homestead.
Into the homestead, so it frees up housing for the younger folks as well, so it serves a dual purpose.
One floor?
One floor. Have you been into it?
Over here?
Yeah.
Wow, when they first started, we took a round.
I had two hundred people go through there. Fifty people gave checks.
Yeah.
Then the whole thing fell.
Then it fell through.
Yeah, I know.
But it's, they picked up the ball with it, I think they've done a good job and it's getting filled up now, yeah, because it, nothing would be worse than a vacant project.
I know, but. This is all our money.
Okay, so we'll look forward to that. Get it in and we'll get it scheduled.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have a future meeting scheduled.
Yeah, so we won't have to meet tomorrow then, right?
No, and we're not meeting tomorrow night. That was a.
If that, if this ran over.
It was a carryover if we needed the time, it was anticipation of the solar bylaw being in, or like tonight if these things ran over. So we don't have a meeting tomorrow night as well.
Do we have any idea where they're at with that solar?
I have just anecdotal.
No.
So we don't even want to talk about February twenty of this plan?
Okay, we had talked about setting a tentative public hearing for February for the solar bylaw. Maybe we should schedule that then. For February twenty, we'll tentatively schedule a public hearing for the solar bylaw in anticipation of those, the two groups getting together and developing a solar bylaw for the annual town meeting. So we will have that hearing then, hopefully they'll have it done and we can get it ready for town meeting. So, February twenty is our next meeting.
Do we need to talk to Paul about that again?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you all set with that? Holding that, that, or the warrant, that law?
Well, I, you know, I talked to Paul a month ago and said, hold a slot for us in the, in the warrant.
Did he give you a deadline?
No. No. I told him it would probably be towards the end of February and he thought that would be okay. That was, again, a month ago. I'll be here tomorrow in the morning, I'm not sure what time he gets in.
You're on your way, nine thirty.
Okay, well, I'll look for him tomorrow to, and I'll meet with him again. Any other business?
No.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.